It is ten oh seven and I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. The chair minister is a quorum pleasant and they'll do the film.
Hi, I'm going to be ladies to reply of the United States of America. And to the Republican for which it stands, one nation under God, in the business law with the team.
Okay, um, let's go into two point zero additions and revisions to the agenda. Pat, did you want to add the letter?
I would like to have a conversation regarding moving some vacation.
Vacation.
Vacation leave employee to another and fellow ways that's been on through our legal department.
Okay. So we'll add under new business constructible of letter of agreement with me. Anything else to add? Okay, let's move into three point zero correspondence and public comment. Individuals wishing to address the county court may do so at this time and at other times throughout the meeting. Speakers are asked to raise your hands to be recognized by the chair, give your name and address and limit comments to three minutes. And for folks who dialed in on their phones, it is star six to unmute yourself. If you're on the zoom, it's a lower left hand side. And as always, we are very informal. So as we move through the agenda, there's an item that you want to bring my feedback on or ask questions about, we welcome that. Any public comment at this point?
So I have a quick one, if you don't mind. Um, I just want to invite people that myself and Judge Farrar Campbell and the broadband fellow are going to do a presentation about broadband and kind of tie it to the South Gillum County Health District. Um, November twenty first at six P M. Um, I know they have a call in feature, but I'm also going to have a zoom link to the part of the presentation. And also inviting anyone that wants to come to please participate and let me know if they have any questions about how to connect. And the whole goal of this is to try and give more information about what broadband we have in Gillum County and what we're working towards and how it can help the different entities. So we're starting with South Gillum County Health District and we hope that we go to north and also to the school districts and anyone else that we might figure out how our dog and pony show is going to work. So just inviting you and I'm going to invite the council this evening in our meeting.
Are you going to do a formal invitation via email?
Um, we can, I had guess I hadn't thought of that. I mean, it's going to be on there. Okay, it's going to be on South Gillum's agenda. And so I don't know. I mean, it's a public meeting, so I can go ahead. Once I figure out where it's going to be on the agenda also.
I get a copy of those agendas, Catherine, so I can share that to the county court as well.
Okay. And I also know too, if anyone is on Facebook, there is a content community calendar that is posting all the agendas. So um, if you want to go into that link also, that would, that would be good. So.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Catherine. Any other public comment at this point? If not, um, under correspondence, we just have some correspondence from Jan Moffett in her capacity as the fiscal officer for South Gillum Cemetery District, just sort of giving us an update on um, the well and water rights that they had asked us to fund during the last cycle, we gave them a grant. Um, basically, it looks like, um, because of some delays with the state that it's likely they may be coming to us and asking for an extension on there when they're actually be able to drill the well.
A special project was a capital.
A capital investment grant. Um, so you can see, uh, Jan's letter to us as well as some of the back and forth between Jan and and the state regarding equipment and stuff like that, if you're curious about it. But this was just sort of a heads up and the commissioners. So you're aware of what's happening with that project. You get asked about it. Um, let's move on to four point zero consent agenda.
I have a amendment to the agenda on content um, around the part on page five and the matter we advisory committee agreement with C D. There it said Commissioner Shannon noted that this committee would be separate from the soil water concentration board and does not have employees from the weed department on that committee right now. That is not correct because Doug has been on that committee for sometime as a member of the so much on board. However, what they want to do is hold their meetings and then they have requested to not have a member of the weed department on the committee.
So could this be modified to say Commissioner Shannon noted that this committee would be separate from S W C D board and will not
Yes.
Have employees from the weed department on that committee period. Okay. So then, uh, so the minutes would be amended to cross out does to will and then cross out right now. Any other changes? Taken care of. Um, and then just, uh, so folks know that there was an amended uh, uh, agenda that went out, which added shutler station nine one addressing. And so if you have an old copy, that has been added as well to the consent agenda. Um, any other question?
I moved to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved the consent agenda as amended, which consists of consider approval of amended October nineteenth, twenty twenty two regular minute uh, regular meeting minutes. Consider approval of November bills pending review. Consider approval of O dot stiff discretionary grant application, submit a request and authorize county judge to execute related agreements. And consider approval of shutler station road nine one one addressing for Z O group LLC. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I.
I. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, um, let's move into five point one, which is consider second reading and adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty two dash zero six. Adopting amendments to the Gillum County Comprehensive Plan and approving a goal three exception. A zone change from exclusive farm use E F U to industrial, general industrial or N G. And a conditional use permit for expansion of existing hazardous waste facility on approximately nine hundred and thirty five acres. You want to do your.
Use myself. My wife is an employee waste management department process.
Sounds good.
I moved to have a second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty two dash zero six by title only.
I will second it. It's been moved and seconded that we have the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty two dash zero six by title only for their discussion. All those in favor?
I.
I. Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, in the county court of the state of Oregon in and for the county of Gillum ordinance number twenty twenty two dash zero six in the matter of an ordinance adopting amendments to the Gillum County Comprehensive Plan and approving a goal three exception, a zone change from exclusive farm use E F U to industrial, general industrial N G and a conditional use permit for expansion of an existing hazardous waste facility.
Um, I moved to accept the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty two dash zero six by title only and adopt the ordinance.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded that we accept the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty two dash zero six by title only and adopt the ordinance. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I. Any opposed? Motion carries. Right, Pat?
Yeah. Waste management is very grateful for the hard work that went into this. We really appreciate everybody's work. It was a big ask. It was a big task. Um, Michelle did a great job and it was not an easy thing to get through. I am much more knowledgeable about so we are very appreciative of all the hard work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Michelle's on here too. So kudos, Michelle.
Thanks.
Michelle, really good work in getting all of this through. Um, okay, let's move on to five point two, which is consider approval of project management proposal for outdoor library design from pillar consulting. Okay, so during that July, we approved a contract with a student from the University of Oregon, Jenna to develop a plan for the uh, for the block directly behind the library where the old phone and sun's building was. Um, and so we had discussed sort of doing a electric vehicle charging plus sort of green space, um, which I am now sort of referring to as the outdoor library as shorthand. Um, so Jenna has come, she completed a site visit and has put together some initial concept documents um, for the green spaces. And that's really her area is just the landscaping piece of that. Um, and so those were in your packet. I also shared those with the library staff and asked Mary and Gibb, uh, who serves as the chair of the library board to pass that on to the other board members for their feedback. Um, and so part of the discussion today is to get your feedback commissioners on things you like or don't like. And but then the other piece is to sort of put together the larger plan, which includes the E V station, chart, charging stations, parking for the cargo trailer that the um, library uses. Um, engineering the side of the sidewalk, which is what actually started this entire discussion was the sidewalk needs to be replaced. Um, I asked Jeff a shot to put together a proposal. Um, and so you will see that in there. Um, it's, as I said, covers the electric charging portion, new sidewalk entrances and then just general project management of the construction. Um, so that's basically it in a nutshell. Um, I, how would you guys like to start? Would you like to talk about Jeff's proposal or concepts?
I would like to talk about Jeff's proposal. A little bit of concept, there's like four conceptual designs there. Two don't have E V charging.
What that's yeah, and the two, the first two would need to be modified, I think, to put the E V charging.
Because I think that, I guess.
That is not. The first two take up the entire property, don't they? And without putting A V charging in.
Yeah.
And that was one of our main goals.
There's not enough focus in Jeff's proposal on E V charge.
Okay.
And it's more about the.
Not only, and I mean, this is really nice. How it's really cool and nice, but it's forty one thousand dollars to not move forward in any way other than doing the design and engineering. That's pretty good fiscal spend.
Yeah.
And we haven't looked at what grants are available on the E V side that should be part of this conversation maybe in this proposal. But and not to, you know, it needs to be something that really addresses. But do you have to bring Business Oregon into this? But what do we need to do to really look at how we could help the funding on it? Um, because there's got to be funding available for engineering and design for E V projects. I don't know. A lot of the conversation that we're so far has been every fifty miles and I eighty four, but there's got to be some way of addressing rural communities that are off I eighty four. If we're going to move forward with any type of green entry electric car system. And then I had some concerns over some of the language in there because I don't know if that was in Jeff's, someplace it showed two units. And I'm thinking if you're going to do something like this, it should be more than two.
Well, I think that was just a
Maybe it was in.
That was just a conceptual thing of it wasn't really. And then that was just a picture of something that was
And then the
already existed.
Yeah, the one that looks like the two have five or six that are in the.
Two, four, six, we're showing in these in three and four. But and also what about the sidewalk? There's no these drawings don't show. Are we just assuming from this that the sidewalk is getting repaired?
Yeah. So in the, in the first um, in Jenna's, she's not showing the sidewalk. She's really just.
Cause that's not her thing.
Yeah. Um, Jeff's, the preliminary thing that you have, which is like the only drawing that we have from Jeff is really for Jenna to understand how much space she might have to work with. So it's definitely not, um, it doesn't have the sidewalk. It doesn't have the, because it was really meant to sort of show how much parking space would need versus green space. Um, so what I am hearing is that it might be beneficial at least on Jeff's portion to go back and do a little bit more research on funding options to support covering his costs. And also that we may have some questions on parking configuration. Am I hearing that?
Yes.
Um, because I think, yeah, that Jeff had assumed that people would be pulling in and sort of parking, in which case I think the drawing, the reason we had two was so that there would be sufficient green space to actually do something with. But it may be that we need to ask about reconfiguring the parking. The one thing I'm not sure about is.
See, the sidewalk isn't part of that either. And that's how we got here. We need to fix the sidewalk.
So how about this on Jeff's proposal? That I do a little bit more, um, digging on potential funding sources that I asked him to come talk to us about parking in particular. Um, and so we sort of hold on his for now. Does that sound?
That's, yeah, the other thing that I, and I know there's, it's a decent idea, but how can you incorporate solar into the whole library building and everything? While you're doing this, you know, like they show those pictures of those solar trees and it would be cool that you had so that that piece of property operating primarily or at least in the solar system on a small solar project.
Yeah.
Yeah, nothing in his proposal says anything about the sidewalk. I'm sorry, I keep harping on sidewalk. No, but that was the whole reason we're even here is to fix that sidewalk.
So I.
County owns that property. How did we get about moving the labor? How was that?
So that was during Judge Shaw's time. And they were in the little building by Janison and Marshall's. I think in the minutes they had originally Jeff would know this because he was a project manager. I think originally they had looked at whether they should build. But that building was open. And I think ultimately they decided that they wanted it on Main Street. There weren't that many places to build. And so they decided to retrofit it. And kind of make it work. Yeah, I think that's the origin. I wasn't, I wasn't living here, I think, when they did it. So I don't really remember all the history. Maybe the two of you might remember.
Remembered and there was something about building that it wasn't when you know, structurally sound enough to go on to.
I think that's right.
Something to do with the structural part of that whole building.
Yeah, it felt like maybe the floors
Yeah.
were couldn't support the weight of the books or something. Um.
The floor was starting to fall through with all the weight of the books. Yeah.
Oh, Mary's on.
Boxes.
Yeah, I just want to make sure if we're going to spend forty one thousand dollars to do something there, that we have a plan in place that goes beyond this to have completion rather than just so forty one thousand out of the Mary go nowhere.
Yeah, I don't think this is complete. I think there's a lot more that we need to capture in order to make it what we want to see. Yes, ma'am.
So can I just, um, because I'm curious about how this is all going together. Because I'm thinking about Arlington and the things that being down there. Is this, it sounds like this is a county project because the county owns the property. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Not city.
Correct. Yeah.
I did reach out to Mayor Barton this morning and asked him to look at five point two on the agenda. Because um, obviously, uh, probably somewhat depends on next week's election where green energy and how everything goes from here down the road, but um, Arlington ought to be one of those places that were fifteen miles on I eighty four that gets charging station. And then if you, you know, one of his comments back, well, it makes our cities look green.
Worry, you didn't miss anything. We paused, but we did lose internet access in the courthouse, which is why we went offline. Um, so we halted our conversation and we're going to pick it back up. Um, so where we left off is that we are going to, on Jeff's proposal, circle back. Yeah, get some clarity on a few things, including how to pay potentially for the program or the his services. And um, greater clarity on the sidewalks and the parking situation.
And which conceptual drawing is being recommended to the court because we can make a decision, but maybe what I see is that what the library people want or the public wants.
Mary, when is your next, um, library board meeting?
Next Wednesday.
Okay, so how about this? How about, um, if you can share with them the conceptual drawings? And give us some feedback. And for the public, we will post these four conceptual drawings online. Um, maybe we could do one of those. We might be able to do that as well. We might do a little email blast to let folks know that we need some feedback.
Yeah, I don't want to pick something and then have people say, eh, those people, what they picked that for?
Yeah. Um, so I think what we will do is, uh, just sort of hit pause, do a little bit more time to gather some feedback. Um, including from the library board and then also, so folks who are from the public who are interested in weighing in. You are either the pub, the library board is a public meeting as well. So you're welcome to weigh in with the library board. Or if you prefer, you can weigh in with the county court when we meet in December. Um, I think it's probably going to be the next one, although we may have a special meeting that I'll be bringing up here shortly. And so does that sound?
Yeah, the one thing that I'm not sure how you include this because it's obviously a decent research in, in, in the part about setting that whole area up and so on.
Mm hmm.
And whether that's through filler or what, I'm not sure where we've moved to find out what possibilities are out there that we could you know, I mean, we're going to go green on the whole property.
Bradley.
Could you perhaps partner with a solar project that's currently in the county to see if that might be something where they could be a partner in some way?
I don't know how your conversation will be.
It was very cordial.
Yeah, I know I did approach Army, the school system was looking at doing a solar project and they just were like, we don't do small stuff like that. So there was that. But then it's been a couple of years ago, but that was kind of what I got from.
Is that something Business Oregon can help us with?
Someplace it's got to be somebody that can help us find out what's out there for funding that we could go after. I mean, when everything's kind of.
Columbia Basin may also have. There may be something on the co-op side. I remember a couple of years ago when they put the charging station in at Columbia Basin. I feel like there were grants then that they were.
Well, there's some small solar.
Do that.
Legislature and stuff out there and they've been kind of arguing back and forth with the incentives are good enough on them. I've heard some of that through the creed board. Then penalties been real involved. For entities within cities and, and you know, hospitals and whatnot and how to utilize solar. So there's got to be. I just want to find you. Apparently they'll have time to figure it out. Um, how you find out what's out there and available and if we have a possibility on that. And that could be huge in a project like this.
Mm hmm. Okay, so all signs point to we need more information and more feedback.
Yes.
Um, so what I will do as next steps is, Mary, if you could, um, plan on definitely getting this out to your board and getting their feedback, um, next week, that would be fantastic.
Yes, it's already part of their packet for next week.
Perfect. And then, um, Miranda, if you can work on getting things posted to the website and then let's also do an email blast out just to let folks know that we would like feedback. And here are the two places that they can provide it, either at the library board or at the county court office or and or coming to our meeting, our next meeting. Um, and I will circle back with Jeff to get a little bit more clarity on the parking issue and invite him to come to our next meeting. So that he can kind of, um, address that and also make sure that I think he does reference the sidewalks, but that it's a little bit more spelled out in his proposal.
This, this proposal is really pretty open and it gives all time and material.
Yeah. So Brittany says, um, should I am I be able to, um, help us in the direction of some grants for this type of thing?
Oh, okay, great.
Smart. Oh, right. Listened and all while she was on vacation. I had some E V charging and things like that.
So we will, um, plan on putting this back on the court's agenda, um, at a future meeting. Um, and then we'll figure out where to go there. Did I cover everything in terms of?
I believe so.
Yeah, so the only other thing I may do is go back to Jenna and ask for the first two concepts if she can modify those and include the, uh, the E V charging in those.
Section, let me section that off.
And then that way you can see what that would look like with, under these concepts. Okay. So to T B D, folks, this is a cool, really fun project potentially that could be a really neat space on, um, just off of Main Street. So please definitely look at those concept drawings and give us some feedback because we, um, it will be hopefully a gateway for visitors being introduced to our community. And so and also potentially a really neat outdoor space for the library to do some outdoor programming, which I think will be cool too.
Well, just for public to use and utilize.
Exactly. Okay, more to come on that one. Um, for five point three, consider approval of project management proposal for shutler station utility extension from pillar consulting. So this is the follow up to the conversation we had, um, on October fifth about extending shutler station road and also the utilities within the industrial park. Um, so I asked Jeff to put together a proposal for um, drilling the well. Um, and also extending the utilities both to the southern part of the park as well as under the road um, to the eastern sort of section on the park. That has nothing currently. Um, and so it's in your packet. Um, questions on this one?
No, I make a statement. I, I just don't know how we cannot, if we are serious about having industrial property available for business, kind of, and how we cannot move forward. Develop in that area down the line. If we got to, if we get somebody answered and come in and we are going to start engineering, it's, we're going to lose them in the process.
We're way behind.
Yeah, and on this one, it's, um, the quote was for sixty seven thousand, but I wanted to note that six thousand of that is for the topographical survey. And then there's an additional ten thousand. That's for electrical design if we, if we need that. Um, so there's some special things in there.
Shut down.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we need to move forward with developing that property.
Yeah, the sooner the better.
Especially where we've got all that across the road.
It's not really.
Zero utilities. It was the south end, so.
Yeah, they're both just parking lots of this.
Places to put window blades.
Yeah, it's really challenging. Yeah, it's really challenging.
But now we need to do something.
Yeah, and if, to Pat's point, if we. It is hard when Business Oregon sends us prospects that are asking for water and things like that. To be able to say with a straight face that it's ready, because it's possible, but it's not.
You'd get sent that whole wee side, might be perfect.
Yeah.
That project.
Yeah.
Okay. Ready set go.
Ready set go.
Soling amount of up to sixty-seven thousand for engineering and project management services for shuttles station utility extension project.
Second, it's been moved and seconded that we approved a proposal from pillar consulting and the amount of up to sixty-seven thousand dollars for engineering. And project management services for the shuttler station utility extension project, is there further discussion?
Where do the funds come from?
Um, it can either come out of economic development. Or there is, I think, a pretty sizable amount sitting actually in the industrial park.
Um.
Um, so it's really, if you guys have a preference between the two.
Just sitting there while we can use it.
Right, okay, yeah, because there is.
Okay. Okay, I will look and make sure. I'll make sure there's sufficient funds in there, um. I'm guessing based on the timeline. That most likely this will spill over into the next fiscal year, so I'm hoping there should be plenty in there. But um, if there is not, I will circle back and clarify, but I think there's probably enough in there.
That we need to pull some out of economic development next fiscal year, we can. Do that.
Do that, okay, sounds good, we will get that one um, moving. Okay, uh, let's see here, next one, so six point one and six point two are related. Six point one is consider approval of amendment number two. To Gillum County Engineering and Related Services Contract with Comstructure Consulting LLC. And then six point two is consider approval of consent for assignment of Gillum County Engineering and Related Services Contract. From Comstructure Consulting to Lightspeed Networks, okay, so here's what's happening. Um, Eric Gordon, who is the current owner of Comstructure, reached out. To notify us that his company, which is Comstructure, is being acquired by Lightspeed Networks. Um, and so the Comstructure team is going to be absorbed, just moved under Lightspeed. And available to continue working on our project. So nothing will change in terms of who we're working with, their familiarity with our project, any of that kind of stuff. What um, Eric has asked us to do is approve amending. The existing contract that we have to reduce the tail insurance coverage requirement. It was six years before in the project before, or the agreement before, down to three years, which. For him resulted in about a twenty thousand dollar savings when they were doing this transaction. I ran that provision by Johnny Anderson, and he was like, I have zero concerns with that. Um, six was probably, I think standard contracts are three, I don't know why we did six in ours. Yeah, so he was not, um, he didn't have any concerns about that. And then the other request was to extend the timeline yet again for phase one to the end of the year. Um, so December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And partly, I think, because they, their staff was tied up in this transition. Um, and so their timeline's a little bit behind, although I think they're very close to being done with phase one. We're trying to get them on our agenda in December to come show us what they've got, um, so.
They have done something.
Yes, yes, they have mapped it all and they were, last we checked. Were working on the high level sort of budget number for us to, this is what it would take to get this everywhere.
Well, and the expiration date is already passed anyways, so.
Yes.
We've moved on.
Yes, it has, and so how this would work is we would need to do, approve the amendment first. And then the contract allows us to assign the entire contract to Ellison, who is the company who will be assuming it. Um, and honestly, we kind of have to do it. Or the project just goes away.
Right.
Because Comstructure is being acquired whether we like it or not, um, so.
No control over that.
Yeah, so that piece, um, but this is just really tidying up the paperwork to make sure that we've officially said yes, Ellison. I do think on that actually. Ellison might give us some advantages. Because they have done, for instance, rural networks in Mopin that they're actually running, so. They have some experience and not just how you do the design work, but also how. If we build it, how it might be managed and functioned. Um, and so I think, and, and for those who are unfamiliar, Ellis Networks actually started as. A collection of uh, co-ops.
Oh.
Of electric co-ops worked on it, um, and so. There, a lot of their business mentality I have found is much more similar to dealing with our electric co-ops. They were, in the early, early days, Catherine can probably confirm this as well. Much more forthcoming with information, much more collaborative in their approach than sort of the more private companies, so. I, I think it will, it would be a good thing for us anyway to have Alison um, helping with some of this stuff. Questions?
Figure out the question.
No, it is what it is.
I, I move to approve amendment number two to Gillum County Engineering and Related Services Contract. With Comstructure Consulting LLC as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve amendment number two to Gillum County Engineering and Related Services Contract with Comstructure Consulting LLC. As presented, is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Alright.
By, I, any opposed, motion carries.
I move to approve the consent for assignment of the amended Gillum County Engineering and Related Services Contract to Lightspeed Networks.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent for assignment of the amended Gillum County Engineering and Related Services Contract to Lightspeed Networks. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Alright.
I.
I, any opposed, motion carries. Okay, uh, moving on to six point three, this was an addition um, to the agenda is consider approval at the letter of agreement. With ASME, Pat, do you wanna do this one?
Um, yeah, we have um, a union employee. Who is. Out of vacation now. Off time basically. Who has a relative, close brother who's in the hospital, he's having to perform his passive home farming. And another non-union employee has asked to move sixty hours of vacation time to him. And we've had, we've got nothing in any of our. Systems that allow that to happen, and so Liz has reached out to her labor attorney and she's drafted up this. O A. Which would allow us to do that as a one-time special case. Purchasing this O A is to allow one-time non-presidential donation of a crew vacation leave. From a non-union county employee, Tina Potter, to a member of the union. Doug Potter, for his immediate use, paid off to assist a family member with a serious health condition. The vacation donation will be limited to sixty hours and will not put Doug Potter over the accrued vacation limits as detailed in article seven. Of the collective bargaining agreement. And my opinion, I think, is that it's um, doesn't cost the county any taxpayer dollars to move vacation time. And can help um, employ mental illness in this difficult situation that's in. So I got this last night and I thought this is our best option.
Yeah, I will say I have not, because we got it late uh, yesterday afternoon, have not had time to discuss this with the union.
Obviously, you have to do that first to move anything forward, where I thought we should put on the agenda today, we just. We're not moving in that direction, that's what we're gonna start.
Correct, yeah, and I would recommend if the court thinks that this is the direction they wanna go, that we go ahead and approve the letter. And then if the union has any concerns, we can all obviously win those back. Um, but this at least says that we're willing on our side, the union has to agree to it on their side. Um, but at least then we're not, especially given that we're not planning on having a third meeting in November. And that allows some um, ability to address this employee's concerns um, uh, in a more timely fashion, so. Questions? Um, then I would move to approve the letter of agreement between Gillum County and ASME um, as presented. I'll second, it's been moved and seconded that we approved the letter of agreement between Gillum County and ASME as presented, is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Alright.
I.
I, any opposed, motion carries. Okay, I will circle back with um, with Brenda about that and, and let you know if there's any problems on the union side. Okay, um, let's move into seven point zero announcements in uh, next meeting. Um, so currently, we are scheduled, the third week in November is AOC. And so we had in, uh, anticipated cancelling that meeting, um, since we'll all be in Eugene. And so our next regular meeting will be December seventh uh, here in Condon. One thing that has come up in the meanwhile is I had a discussion with um. Brian Walsh at Avangrid yesterday and. Avangrid is anticipating coming and asking the court for a pilot agreement for Oregon Trail soar. From my understanding and seeing, because Morrow County actually just did one. That that is actually a, an agreement, not as um, detailed as the SIP. Um, but basically, under Oregon law, you can, they automatically um, qualify to have the pilot. That's not what we would be approving, um, but Oregon law says that the floor for um. The fee is fifty-five hundred per megawatt and the ceiling is seven thousand per megawatt. And that is the court's discretion.
It's in a range, we can go within that range any place.
Fifty-five hundred up to seven thousand per megawatt, it's a forty-one megawatt project. Um, and so it's kind of interesting, the bottom is like, I think. Chat and I calculated it was like two hundred and twenty-five thousand in fees. If we went with seven thousand, it's, I think, about sixty thousand dollars more, uh, because it's such a small project. So we're not talking about a ton of money, um, but Avangrid would like some clarity on where the court is going to go. And so Brian had asked if we were meeting later in November, and I said, currently not. However, we do have the work session on the twenty-second scheduled with the court and other taxing districts. So if we thought this was something that we wanted to pick up before December. We could do a short special meeting before that joint meeting, um, it will be in Arlington. And so we could do something like that if you guys were game for that.
Is there? There is no reason we can't ask for something along with in the debate, did in pilot.
No, um.
If we did a base summon in lieu of, did something along some.
Yeah, we could do something like that, it's such a small amount, um. I mean, one thing that we were kicking around internally is because our feedback had been, hey, maybe think about um, to offset the agricultural impact. Sending some dollars to SWCD, maybe top, since we, we are not seeing the local economic benefit in the construction. Maybe consider supporting housing or um, childcare. So one thing that we could do, um, which would actually probably strengthen their request of Department of Energy. I don't know how Brian would feel about this, is basically from the county's perspective saying, hey, we're gonna charge you the full amount, the seven thousand. But we're committing to take the difference, the between fifty-five hundred and seven thousand. To address SWCD or, like, we would do the pastor basically. So that they could with a straight face say to John Department of Energy, us building here in Gillum County is gonna have this impact for SWCD. This, so it's less, it's taking some of the stuff that would be discretionary for us. And us committing upfront, here's where we'll make some investments so that there's um.
So after your discussion with you, you know, it's around sixty thousand difference, where do you?
I mean, my.
Where do you lead in this conversation?
My feeling is that it is such a small amount. I feel um, I. Sixty thousand dollars should not dictate whether something gets built or not for a billion dollar company.
Yeah.
And so we can use sixty thousand dollars to do really good things here, whereas for them, it. Really doesn't impact whether they built, I don't think, ultimately. Um, they will eat up that sixty thousand dollars in attorney costs for. Getting their permitting through ODO, um, and so I feel like we gave them a lot on Montech Solar.
Yes.
And especially if we are dedicating some of these funds for things that benefit the broader community. I think that it's. I'm not, I don't have the appetite to give them a break this time.
In communication within this, is, because they are a local employer now, I mean, I think it's important that. In whatever communication we do from the county court level, that we are welcome to. We're not saying we don't want renewable energy in Gillum County, that we leave that out there. Except was Brad, well, maybe you don't want this project in Gillum County, which is what Brad's gonna do.
Yeah.
And um, but we do want, I mean, on the record, we do are interested in these types of projects, it just doesn't make sense for that. And standpoint to, you know, necessarily.
Well, and what I counter to him when he says that is. That we have bottles of employers, waste management being one of them. Where we have a mutually beneficial agreement, like, we um. You know, waste management benefits from our partnership, they contribute to our community, community as a, a large employer. They support things like scholarships and other things outside of that, and my counter to him is, we have never asked you to play that sort of a role. And so if you are just coming in and continually asking us for breaks. And you can't show the benefit, because I said, the difference is, waste management's employing a hundred and fifty people here. Your solar projects are employing two after construction is over. And the tax breaks that we're giving you are enormous, and so if we can't show to our community who still lives here after your construction crews are long gone. That there was a benefit other than the immediate landowner who's holding the lease. Then how do we, with a straight face, say that we're acting in the community's interest? And so we just need a little bit of give on there and to show that they are as committed as our other large employers.
Do know, he has reached out because he wanna know if there's any five oh one C threes they could pass. Funny, it's, and I told him the court had something set up, and so there's been some communication between. For him and him in regards to where that, so. Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, one of the things, of course, what comes the asbestos invasion on the old motel and possibly helping the city with that. So there's stuff out there, one thing I think is kind of important with projects. Is we always need to realize that the north end is getting the tax benefit and the south end doesn't get much.
Right.
And what will be to offset that somewhat.
And he did reach out to me. And um, I gave him some information on my gathering some more information, so.
Right. So that's the only thing potentially that we need to look at during the special meeting, if you guys are game for that. But we are still waiting for them to make the formal request to get on the agenda. He just said he thought they would be coming in if they would like, because they are looking for buyers for the project right now. So they needed to know what they should be pricing it at. I feel like um, the labor and materials costs are such um, wild cards that I'm not. I'm a little um, skeptical that our sixty thousand dollar decision is going to drive the cost as much as whether they can get electricians on site. Um, but that's just me. Um, anyway, okay, so uh, TBD, we may have a special uh, short meeting, um, just before the joint meeting.
Well, this is, just did open some conversation on the existing project. Well, this is just did open some conversation on the existing project concerns and so then a good conversation.
Yeah, I agree. Um Sherry, what do you have going on?
Counting down? Not totally, but kinda um. Delaney and I are working with um public health and um to make sure that what the county's doing is. What we're supposed to be doing. And so we're going to be um talking with um. Daily and Holly um next week. Um just so we are all on the same page. So we'll be sitting down with them, which is, because I think we're probably doing uh a zoom, but um. We'll see each other's face and have a conversation. We need to do that just to make sure we're doing everything we're supposed to be doing. And of course, the joint meeting, um the um volunteer dinner is. Um Wednesday night, the ninth, and I will be coming to um. Thank our volunteers, and I have um committed at this point. To attending AOC conference unless I'm in Florida.
That's a big and less. How about you, Pat? What are you?
I attended the Zoom uh E O C A meeting. The other day, and one of the topics was around interim water rights, the state applies for out of existing water. Sources that. Has an effect on all other water rights, as near as I can tell. I didn't look at a video the other day, and it it's kind of a strong arm for getting control of all types of water rights. And there's some concerns. And I know um they're having a special meeting on the seventh, one on the seventh about. Some discussion around that, maybe some updates too, but if if it's interesting on. Not really understanding. Instream water rights and how they work, and then listen to that video and what could happen, the consequences of a lot of this. There's some pretty serious things, even the landowners might. In the future, if Blackwater water rights re-creation that. And they're asking for some county support. I've supported it. But I know more on that. The uh Lower John Day Act meeting is next week. AOC, and I think that's kind of what's going on right now.
Oh, and um at our North Court meeting last month, we were talking about um the fact that. Three of the board members will um no longer be um county commissioners. So. North Court. Um they were talking about inviting um. All the county. Commissioners and commissioners elect to attend our next meeting, um just so we can see everybody and some. Kind of bring everybody up to speed on what's going on and where we're at and. So that those new people don't just come in cold and.
Yeah, because that's the significant.
It is the majority of the board. It is the majority of the board. Yes, the board is now just the four commissioners. And so the only commissioner that'll be left will be Judge DeBoltis. And Bob Bitten, um Kathy Schwartz, mine, uh none of us reran.
Okay.
No, they're moving to Washington. Be closer to.
Who's the other guy? Where's he?
Um Bob Bittens from. And I think this was. His second term, but I think in his um portrait business is just. He's running both directions all the time, and he's done a fabulous job as our chairman. Um I really look up to. To everything he's, he's, we've accomplished a lot of things, and it's been driven by Kathy and Bob. So anyway. Well, that might be coming out uh. Molly, you send something out, we can invite everybody, get us something we know that we're having a public.
And we can.
Really would like to encourage people to attend.
Will maybe Delaney and Miranda. Just make them know.
Speed on what's going.
And we're very open meetings. Maybe let's just follow up with Molly if we don't hear from her in a little bit, and just make sure that she remembers to send it to you. Get it out to everybody.
I don't because um we um. In the past, they were only meeting every end of month, and then we had so much going on when the administrator left and. We were changing the structure of things. We were meeting every month, but now that things have gotten settled and and we have our new structure. We went back to every end of month, so um. I don't know if they, we we talked about the fact that December might be too late, so I I'm not sure what. What they're gonna put out, but hopefully um soon we'll be here.
We can maybe reach out to Molly and prompt her.
I think that the um the management team were the ones that really wanted to to do it, so I think. Um they'll really be driving it happening.
Um on the. Twenty second joint meeting, four o'clock's time. I just realized I have a doctor point late three been that day, so.
Driver will have to drive really fast. He doesn't have to have a driver this time.
And we're gonna try to do a heart stop so that I can be home and say.
I like heart stops anyway.
Yeah.
And I think that helps build an agenda along too. Sometimes we get over. We've run over in our meetings just because there is no.
When we get stuck on one thing.
Yeah, exactly. We have to move on. We need to move on.
Moving along. So um for me, let me see here, um. The nine one one board had a meeting last week. Was that last week that we met? Um I just wanted to sort of highlight the commissioners.
You owe it to do.
That uh yes, um but there we are reaching, and so the public is aware of this if you are not paying attention to this. We are reaching a critical. Staffing shortage level in the center. Um so if you see a dispatcher, thank them for staying on the job. Right now, um in order to staff our center, fully staffed, looks like ten. People or twelve, ten dispatchers, two supervisors. Starting yesterday, we were down to two supervisors and two dispatchers. And what that looks like is that our folks are literally working twelve hour shifts, seven days a week right now. And unfortunately, because the training is such a lengthy process. They have two hires right now that have passed their backgrounds, have gone through the D P S S T. But it will be between six and eighteen months before they are able to operate consoles without having somebody's with them, basically. Which means that the existing staff is not gonna get a breather. Um and so we are. Trouble shooting in that um we have reached out to some of our. Regional other dispatchers to see if there's a possibility that they may, for instance, take some of the graveyard shift traffic. So that we can have folks who are not, maybe they'll get, we can have them just working during the day and hopefully relieve each other. Um and then we're also looking at hiring um temporary contract dispatchers. So folks who are already employed regionally, who may wanna pick up some shifts on weekends or something, and just paying them really a pretty. Pretty um lucrative hourly rate, just to get them in here to give um. They have to be in the center. Yeah, yeah, I think um I think we're talking about, it's like sixty dollars an hour is what we're paying for those contractors, because it's. We can't not have nine one one calls being answered. Um but I just wanted to make you guys aware of that, that the board is really grappling with some really. Challenging situations right now with the staffing um down at the center, in case you hear um from people. Because the other thing that is happening, um so that you're aware, are are. Other response agencies are aware of this. They know what's happening in the center, but if you hear complaints, for instance, like all of the admin calls. So like somebody calling the non-emergency line at the nine one one center saying, hey, could I have an officer come out and there was vandalism out here or something? Normally, that would be handled at the center. Those are being redirected out to the agencies. So that the dispatch staff can handle emergency calls and are not being divided. Um but that is a departure from what, how people have been doing it. And so if you hear from people who are grumbling, I just want you to have that basis. If you hear people saying like. The dispatchers are short with me, the dispatchers are, um there's a reason, which is they're under tremendous strain at the moment. So I just wanted to put that on the record, so that you guys were aware. So it's been a gradual thing. Um there's always been challenges. It's a tough. Job to recruit for and to retain people because they just burn out or. Not dissimilar from the sheriff's office. We recruit them, they get their training here, and then they go.
Yeah, somewhere else.
A higher paying agency. Um so it's always been a challenge keeping the center fully staffed. But as of late, it seems to have sort of hit a crisis area where we've had some dispatchers who. Dispatchers who have just moved on to their next thing, but also dispatchers who've been here for a long time, who are ready to sort of step out of that. Um so we kind of hit just this weird um time where we had lots of turnover and um. And they all left at once. And so, but anyway, I wanted to make you guys aware of it, in case you hear from folks who are. Disgruntled about how things are being handled right now, because they really are just in a crisis mode and I'm down there. Um so. Wanted to make you aware of that. Um. Let's see, what else? We are still moving forward on childcare discussions. I had a conversation um last week with the community college and um the school district. Uh Larry uh in Arlington was not able to attend, but Will Luke came in as well. Um really looking at pathways for kids that are identifying, hey, I'm interested in early ed as an education. Uh or as a career pathway, how we sort of use pre-college and some of the stuff that we're already doing within the school districts. To connect those kids earlier and sort of get them on a pathway. Um so that. Because Brian was new, that was an important discussion anyway, to have their um folks connecting, not just on early ed classes. But on all of the pre-college sort of opportunities. Um so we're still working on that. Um we are still having discussions about the early learning center expansion here. Um and we had a meeting yesterday with the city trying to work out parking. Um because um what it's looking like is that we would be building the expansion. Where the existing parking lot is, and. The recommendation right now is that we look at building three classrooms, uh because Janine has enough on her waitlist right now to fill two classrooms. And there are several pregnant women that I know of who are not on the waitlist. Um so if they wanted an opportunity, we would, I mean, we'd have to build for for that, so um. And if it if it chilling needs to, um then it also may be an opportunity if the school district's needs. So they've got large classes coming through and need to keep the kindergarten over there one year or something. That would give some flexibility with the school district as well, if they needed for that. Um so anyway, I think we've um got a solution on the parking um or close to it. And so um. Jeff's gonna start working on site plan runs and things like that, based on what we already approved for this time. And then I imagine we'll be coming back with more information and saying if this is something the court wants to proceed with, looking at funding. Um so um that is still going. Oh, yeah. Delaney, do you wanna share that?
Sure, we had our first home-based care meeting here in Condon on Friday. Um that was with uh childcare partners and the chamber. We hosted it here at the courthouse. Um and it was very well attended. Um Nancy, I was very, very glad that she was able to come. We had a couple of our. People here who are currently providing care, looking at how to get registered to expand their care to others. And it was a really positive meeting and a lot of questions were answered, and I think it'll be. We'll see some benefit from it, and we have our meeting in Arlington on Friday, the Grand Course Building in five, the same thing, the chamber will be there. We'll have Nancy there, and so we'll hopefully get some interest there for to do some centers down in Arlington. Wow.
It sounds like Arlington's getting in the same situation as the nine one one.
Yeah.
They weren't even open the other morning. Earlier than they normally are, and I do know that one of the employees, Hannah, has resigned. And they've reached out to, I believe, Kelsey Beard. Become the director.
Yeah.
So let's.
At five, yeah.
Yeah, we have been trying to connect with Burmene to see what, how we can help. And I think she's so far underwater that even finding time to meet with us has been a challenge, so.
Maybe we need to reach out to the board and have them get a little bit more involved to help bring some of these decisions.
I include them on all of the correspondence when we ask.
Yeah, no.
So that's why I'm hoping with the meeting, we can inspire some home-based care centers. There's a lot of opportunity with the Chamber Grant and the Childcare Partners also has grants available, so there's a lot of. Help out there to get some other home-based centers created down there, so hopefully we can find some of those people who are interested.
To understand there's several pregnant women in Arlington as well. Right now, so. She has a small child.
I'm in the club now because I have a two-year-old, so I'm aware of when she and me two women are pregnant, so. Um I it's, which is great news that we've got littles um that are gonna be around. That's a good sign that we've got.
But we need to help families.
We need to do everything we can to help them stay in our.
Exactly, yeah, because my intention, I would still like to look at having. Whether it's the existing childcare center as we know it in Arlington or some new iteration, once Berlin's ready to give up. Yeah, and retire, um give up the center. Um I think the school district has expressed that they are very welcoming of co-locating that center on their property.
I did reach out to Kelsey too and ask her if in fact the rumor was true, and she was supposedly going through background check at that point, I said. Stay connected to the county.
Yeah, that would be super helpful, because we we wanna be helpful, and we can also connect them. I mean, whether that's with her, with Janine, if she has questions about how do you navigate this piece of it. Um so that it's not all on Berlin to try to train. Um yeah, and we can connect her with Nancy and other people that we've sort of met through this process who could provide resources. Um but right now, it's just radio silence really that we're getting. Um and we we have asked the boards included. Usually when we're reaching out to Berlin, and they're not getting back to us right now, so um.
And then looking back to Molly Rogers, it will be the third Thursday in December at ten AM.
Okay.
Going to December then.
Third Thursday in December.
Yeah, we were gonna try to do November, but because of A O C it.
Um so those are the big things for now. Uh I am still working, um I think I said, may have mentioned this. I am working on an overall early education roadmap. So that we can see all of the different factors that are playing into why we have a shortage. And can kind of for the public so that they can understand that it's not just about expanding the facility, for instance, in Condon. Isn't going to alleviate the waitlist because we don't have enough teachers right now.
Right.
And even if we had the teachers, the center doesn't have enough funding to pay them. Um and so. Like, we're trying to address all of the things, but I just want folks to understand that it's a larger, similar with Berlin right now. There's a. Potentially, at some point, there'll be a facility issue. There's a capacity issue in that she can only take up to sixteen right now. The staffing is an issue, and then part of the reason staffing is an issue is because funding is an issue. Um so. And then on top of all of that, we don't have a good ecosystem of home-based providers, which is by the work that Delaney and Kalen and Nancy are doing is so important. Because for some families, if you're working a swing shift or you're working a weekend. Even having the center doesn't cover what you need. Um so. Even having the center doesn't cover what you need. Um, so um, it's the entire ecosystem we're trying to address. And so I'm gonna try to lay that out in a way that um people, hopefully it's a little bit more accessible so people understand the scope of the problem. Um, let's see, other than that, that's really the high points, I think. Um. Already talked about my meeting with Brian. Let me just double check if there's nothing else in here. I think those are the big things. So anything else for the good of the order? All right, then it is eleven twenty-three and I will adjourn the meeting.